Okay, you're good to go.
Okay. It is March 16th, 2022. A regular scheduled planning commission meeting. Tonight, we have a public hearing connected with that. Where we will open it up for public comment on five different areas. We'll take them one at a time as we go through the public hearing. Anybody is wants to make a comment? I'm welcome to do so. And the information has been out on the city website for a number of weeks. As to some limitations to what these issues pertain to. We can do a little bit more explaining tonight if that's necessary. And most of these items will be on our follow-up planning commission agenda. Present here tonight is Severn Johnson, one of our commissioners, and Larry Henry, another one of our commissioners. The others are excused due to conflicts we've seen at tonight. So, we will go forward with the first item for the public hearing. It's a proposed amendment to the city development and construction standards relative to fire hydrants. The city feels that they need to increase the fire flow capabilities. And that's a standard because of the continued housing development going on in the city. So it's in where we're developing construction standards. So it will increase the fire flow from 1,500 gallons to 3,000 gallons per minute. And for to sustain a minimum of going from two to three hours for a total of 540 gallons of water. So we've had the other standard for many years. And the fire chief is making a recommendation that it be increased to this, this new standard.
540,000?
Forty thousand. What? Yeah, I didn't say thousand? Oh, okay, yes. 540,000 gallons. So, there's any public comment to be made on that particular item? Welcome to it. Jody, do you see any? Hey, Ben, any, any comment?
So it's not looking to increase the number of hydrants, but just the, the flow coming through?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item. It's a proposal that we received from, cities received from the developer to decrease the front setback of homes in the Flat D, Thousand Oaks Flat D, from 50 feet to 30 feet. The, the city ordinance allows either of those as determined by the planning commission. 50 feet front setback or 30 foot front setback. And the developer indicated that they received a number of inquiries from potential home buyers that they felt that 50-foot setback limited, severely limited their building envelope. And so they requested that the increase the footprint, building footprint by adjusting the front setback to 30 feet from 50 feet. And this is only in Thousand Oaks Flat D. It's currently a R1-2 PUD to a PUD. There are some issues with some of those lots with the back of them that are because of slopes, they're not built well. So they do not have the full width and size, well, width and length of the lot to to build on. So that's the reason for looking to increase it to billable area by reducing the front footprint. So, that being said, Jody, any ideas? I don't see any. Microbes on another matter. Anyway, any of those present here have any comment or issues on that? All right, we will go on to the next next item of the public hearing. Item number three, it's more of a notice. Happy to answer any questions. Should anybody have any that were moving forward with updating our general plan? It's been five, six years since we have done that. And there's a statutory requirement to inform the public that
Why is this?
City is moving forward to update the general plan. So, any questions or comments? Anybody regarding that? See anybody on the screen? Anybody here present? Have any questions or comments on that? We will go forward with the next item on the, on the public hearing agenda. It's a proposed request from developer Robert Nelson to annex 21.65 acres of property that he owns.
It's an R1-1-0.
And it affects several other participants.
But that's not a winning lot though.
Including No Maney and Sandra Hyatt. Or your lady and Jessica Hyatt. Michael Griffiths.
They have to make setbacks. There's 30 feet there and there's 50 feet there.
They have would be annexed into the city of Woodland Hills. They have made application. That property is currently in Utah County. And it's down near 10200 and Loper Canyon Drive. So the idea is that that would be brought in. Some of that would be divided into a couple of lots. And there is also a request with that for grandfathering in one of the properties there. For our ordinances, the property is annexed. They come in as agricultural property automatically, according to our ordinance. But Mr. Hyatt has requested, Will Hyatt has requested that he be grandfathered in for the property has been used as partly agriculture, partly industrial. And so this would what, this is what would be used in the process of annexing it in. That any use that existed prior to annexation for property currently owned by Noa and Sandra Hyatt located at 11215 South Loper Canyon Road shall be grandfathered upon the City of Woodland Hills Council acceptance of the annexation request filed by Robert Nelson. The use of the property may not expand without permission from the city. The change of ownership will not affect a grandfather's status. Mr. Hyatt, do you want to comment on that tonight for us here?
Yeah, we just was concerned that we not have to alter what we've been doing there from mostly, I've been doing maintenance on my equipment and my own, my personal things. And then I have all my toys in the yard there, so like to not be, like to maintain that.
Okay, very well. Thank you. That's the corner of the conversation.
Yes.
So, any comments from those on the screen? See any raised hands? Any comments from anybody here in the meeting? All right, we'll go on to the next item. Which is a proposal to amend portions of city code titles four, eight, nine, 10, and 11 to clarify the independent laws of the building official who oversees compliance with building and construction codes. And zoning enforcement officer who oversees compliance with zoning. We have received two letters with comments, one from Ted Fujia and another from Megan Fujia. And we'll briefly talk about those that are in our meeting, our follow-up meeting here. But we're in the process of changing our city appeal authority from a five-person committee to a one-person appeal authority who likely be an attorney to try to facilitate the appeals that we may, we may hear. So these changes, that, by the way, has been approved, that new appeal authority. These changes mentioned here are to help clarify some distinctions between building official, building inspector, planning commission review that takes place of, or takes, doesn't take that place, but takes place in some of the review processes that the city does in the normal course of its actions relative to zoning and land use ordinances. So felt that the code treaty, some of them weren't descriptive as to the duties that these officials had. And some of them were outdated a bit with prior code. And so the city is making attempt here to more accurately describe currently what the practice is. This has been reviewed by our attorney in part and still reviewing some of this. And so, but that's the nature of the of the proposed changes in, in title, primarily having to do with, with the titles of people involved in these, in these matters within the city.
Wasn't another reason for doing that was because of changes in state code or recommendations for communities?
No. In fact, we've adopted the state, the state code having to do with allowing providing a mechanism for the city to have a single review official rather than a committee.
Okay.
That's its state code. The city has adopted that in its ordinance.
Okay.
So primarily just to get the tile straight with the responsibilities that show the people out. Again, on the screen, I don't see any hands raised with any question or comment? Are there any here in the room?
I think it's a great idea. Having served on that appeal board, I think it's a great move that you guys are doing. So I'm just poised for it, but moving forward with that.
All right. Can I coach on that?
Sure. Absolutely.
Very good. Okay, thank you. All right. Any, I see no further comments. We'll have an opportunity during a public comment if somebody wants to make unrelated public comments or anything. But we'll go ahead and conclude the public hearing. And move into our regular planning commission session. We'll call it to order. I will leave the pledge. Mary Jaw for application, of course. I take it all. My pledge will be to testify of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we approach the prayer this evening at the beginning of this planning commission meeting for Woodland Hills. Grateful for the opportunity to be to discuss the accidents and affairs relating to Woodland Hills City. Are grateful for the opportunity to live in this area with good people. Be able to enjoy our area. And pray that we might make appropriate decisions for the benefit of our community. And help us as we have these discussions and make these decisions. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, is there any public comment from anybody on the screen? Any topic? I mean, seeing none, any public comment from any of those present here in the room? Okay. We will go on to our business. First item, number 10. Approval of February 16th, 2022 planning permission acts. We sent those out to everybody. I didn't see any feedback or corrections or changes.
Well, when you do it good.
Oh, I did, yes. Remind me, Severn?
Well, it had to do with that American arbitration situation.
Oh, yes.
The way we infringed that.
I mean, I left it the way it was, the way you first gave it to me.
Okay.
And I, since we weren't going to pursue that, I there was a minor correction to the name on that. And I, I left it the way you first gave it to me. Okay. Do you see that as a problem?
I think I made a second comment.
You did, you did, you did. There was a little correction that you made.
Because your first comment wasn't clean. Yeah.
But I think that since we weren't going to pursue it, I just.
I don't know, I think. So man, I, I think it's progress.
Okay, all right. Now, take a motion on those minutes?
Also moved.
Also.
Okay. Larry, the motion seconded by Severn. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 11, recommendation to city council to amend the city development and construction standards 2.6, 2.8, 6, 3D and the city code title 10-17-1C6 dealing with fire hydrants. Any further discussion that, or questions that you have or want me to clarify in that anyway?
Now, one of the reasons for this, according to my understanding, was this larger sized homes that we have now requiring more watering emergency?
That too, yes. That, as well as additional homes that
So the number of homes and the size of the homes.
There is some guidelines and calculations that Chief Northrup has available to him. And what we have been operating under is the very lowest threshold. So I think it's time to up it to the next, to this next threshold. So.
I would definitely accept the changes to those two development and construction paragraphs. 2-8, 6, 3D and 10, 17-1C6.
Okay, motion to accept those standards as proposed?
I will second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, number 12, proposed change to building envelope front setbacks for Thousand Oaks Flat B 50 feet to 30 feet. Some of those homes, a few of those lots have been built on. Do you know how many, Ben, have been built on?
In D?
In, yes.
Thousand Oaks D, I know like Ted's homes in D, Ted Nicholson. The homes next to him, I don't know.
Feller Speltz. The old.
Just the gentleman on the other end.
On his end of construction. Hey, Mick.
And all of those are 50-foot setbacks except Ted. And when, you know. The way it's got a variance to here 30 feet.
Yeah.
My concern is, I mean, if if all of the lots were like Ted's where there's a big drop off on the back side, then that would be fine. And that's not true. A lot of these lots in that area, Flat D, can very easily handle the 50-foot setback. And so I don't think we ought to make it a blanket change to the setback from 50 feet to 30 feet. The those where there is a big drop off, the two lots that are next to Ted going down Cougar Run are probably ones where a variance to 30 feet would be appropriate. But the other ones down at the bottom of that, I don't think a 30-foot setback, a 50-foot setback is not possible. The slopes are very gentle. But there are some lots in there. And so my feeling is that the variance is open where there is a need for the variance, then they can go with the variance. I don't think we ought to make it blanket. Because it's all those that go all the way down to the end of Eagle Nest along Fair Hollow and along Cougar Run as well as Eagle Nest. And of course, if the approval is to, to extend Eagle Nest further on down into a new area that someone wants to develop, that's a different plot. But the two at the end are, are in, are in Thousand Oaks D, which I think to some extent would be wiped out if that new plot is still.
Maybe changes in that side.
Yeah. But that's what, that's what I think.
Okay. Very many plots, or most of these about a half acre or
No, no.
a acre, a little acre.
They're bigger.
Yeah, I think they're at least, well, if, if it's.
A copy of the Thousand Oaks Flat D is included in your packet.
Yeah, I just, I just don't remember the sizes. As it looks like they come in all shapes and sizes. It's currently zoned R1-2PUD. So it's at least two acres.
Oh, well, no.
That's a minimum.
It's PUD.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
It's PUD. And so it's usually under an acre.
Yeah, and it can vary.
Yes.
Do you have any to feel, Ben, for the size?
Yeah, they, they range from anywhere from like, you know, three quarters. There's a, there's a handful that are just over an acre, but they're in that range.
Three quarter.
Three quarter to an acre.
Three quarters might be pushing it. But what an acre size, 50 feet wouldn't be a burden unless the back part of the lot is sloped down so it can't be built on.
Yeah, they're, they're.
I mean, I've, I've not been counting slot mass, I'll say, well, because I don't have connectivity to the internet.
And that paperwork that's on your desk?
No.
The, it's on your, the paperwork on your desk?
I know.
There's a picture, there's a.
I know, that's a picture.
He was looking up at C here, definitely size.
Oh, you wanted to know sizes? And so along Summit Creek Drive. If I go like Lot 143, it's point eight oh, or Lot 142, I apologize, it's point eight oh acres. And Lot 143 is point six nine acres. If I go to where Ted Nicholson's home is, he's on point six eight acres.
And what, what's his lot number?
His is 131.
See, 132 has a house on it.
132 is Frederick Brown and Ted, he's got point seven four.
Hard to build with the 50-foot setback.
And then we go in the cul-de-sac that is known as Cougar Run.
I hear it says seven point.
Okay, yeah, it's a point eight one and a point seven four. So they do vary in size.
You know, it's like, I, I, I'm like, I've got them all locked. So I'm quite familiar with all those lots. So like 138, 129, those have a very steep drop off. And so those were two that a variance would, would likely be required for a 30-foot setback. But you look at 129, 127, one of the others around Cougar Run or El Point on here. I don't think there's any problem with getting a 50-foot setback on, on those lots. And some of the others that go along the side, there may be some on the, on the south side of Eagle Nest that have a severe drop off. But the Swinsons, which is Lot 113, they've been able to do it within the 50-foot setback as well.
Another thing to keep in mind with the new process with the variance that this officer, this attorney, whatever, will be hearing those variant cases as well. And the person appearing before that will be paying for that. Or, so when they come to get a variance, however long that review and hearing lasts by the hour, that's what they'll be charged for there. So I don't discount what you're saying, but I just want us to be aware of that new, that changing process. And maybe there are just a few that are, that would be affected by requests of variance. Corner lots, as you mentioned, Mary, I can see where you got 50 on the front and 50 on the side. That can severely cut into billable space.
And that's what, you know, Ted Nicholson's lot is a former lot.
Yeah.
And he can get 50 foot on one side, but the, the front on his was where the 30 foot was needed. Because there is a severe drop off on the, that lot.
Yeah.
And those others next to him going down Cougar Run have a severe, the first two have a severe drop off from the road. And so I can see those as, as candidates for a variance. But a lot of the others, I, I just don't see that there's any. Some of them are actually going, you know, along the south side of Eagle Nest.
Exactly, percent of probable too. It's over 35.
Well, yeah, but. It's not.
It can be a lot, okay. Any thoughts, sir?
So is this coming from the developer?
And there's one person who has contacted me who's possibly interested in a lot. And he asked what needed to be done. He's got a house design in mind and it did not, it would not fit on 50-foot setback lot. So he was letting me know that that was of interest to him and concern. He was letting me know that that was of interest to him and concern and.
Is that one of the ones along Cougar Run?
It's on Summit Creek Drive.
Cause I noticed that some of those lots were already sold.
Yeah.
Along Cougar Run.
This was not sold, this still belongs to the Bell.
Okay.
I know the variance, of course, it's gonna be a whole different, well, game now with the. Variance board, you can't rely upon what's been done or things, but. I think they've been pretty accommodating with other general variance with things that they've had to review and deal with. Well, it's not that we need to take a vote tonight, but it, it, I mean, it's easy enough just to table for the time being. We've had a totally hearing on it and. Whether or not we have to see. If it becomes a problem and resurrect it again, if, if we need to do that, just to, just table. Just table it whether they continue, they may have to, or they want to turn around in the future.
I don't think we can table it, certainly.
Second to that?
I'll second that. I'd like to get some input from Ted as well. Having been a. Participant in that.
Yes, that might be, maybe we could get the developer to, to give us more exact, you know, from an analysis, how many lots actually. Would fit into this category, is that sure? See if there's a whole lot or just a few or what.
And you know, and, and some of the things that I understand in terms of. What kind of a house they wanna build. That, that could really cover it as well.
Yeah.
Not just the slope, but how big they wanna build the house, you know?
Yeah, that's true.
The other side setbacks as well that will limit the, the billable. Part of the lot.
Absolutely. Okay. Now let's take that. Um. Let's, let's go out of order here a little bit, uh. We've got some people here waiting. Let's address some of those and then we'll come back to some of these other items. I mean, let's go to item nineteen. Tiger Stones is here. They're, they've, um. Re-zoned their property and are interested in putting a, uh. Another building, a building lot. On, on their property. Subdividing it, and so, um. With your package, I think they're. I don't remember how. I don't even want to. Right in there.
At the end of the packet.
Like a lot of pages.
So we, we've approved that already, correct?
Uh, we've approved this.
Re-zoned.
Re-zoned, so now they're coming forward with their preliminary. Uh, plat for subdivision. David, you want to slide?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for, uh, looking at all this, um. So just as a, as a way to go through this is, I'm just gonna thank you for the rezone. Now this is, uh, in anticipation of having the, the, the second lot that our son, um, would build on. So it's only family and he can't sell, he has to sell it away to me. So once he builds his house, it has to go back to me because nobody's gonna live up there besides.
Hope he's a good neighbor.
He's gonna be good, well, he's actually a good neighbor right now because he lives downstairs with his wife and kids, so. Anyway, so we'd be pretty excited about doing that, um, obviously following whatever, uh, standards, setbacks, et cetera, within the city. Um, we've had it, uh, the engineering looked at, uh, we've had the survey. Um, the, what we're asking for is a conditional approval. Um, we, we know that there's still a geotechnical, uh, solstice that needs to be determined. Um, but I believe that that is only associated with, uh, roadways, so I think that that's waived, I believe.
Yes.
Um, and then, uh, the perpulation, um, context, uh, we have that planned to come, there's just. There was a little bit of a difference between what the county was saying that we had to have done first, and I think what the city was saying we had to done first, so.
Uh, let, let me interrupt you just.
Yeah, please.
And share with, to, to, we had some discussions on this that you're not aware of. The county has changed their practice, uh, for, uh, for septic. They, um, had our, our preliminary subdivision plan. Up to now, we've requested approval from the county for the septic system. The county will no longer do that without a preliminary plan having been approved. So, uh, they. They want the preliminary plat approved and then they will address the septic. Issues, they give oversight to it, the, the design of it, uh, the percolating tests that are done. And, uh, they used to allow the percolation test before a preliminary plat was done. To see if it was, the area was good for percolation. Now they won't do that until a preliminary plat is, is approved. So that's what, uh, David is talking about, and so we're, we're gonna have to change our processes to accommodate that. We don't have any control over the county, the county has complete say-so on septic, approve it. We, we just, we looked for a letter from the county saying it's been approved and, and that, that's fine, but we're. We're gonna have to change our order a little bit, uh, with, uh, with septic system having to do with, uh, preliminary plan. So that's what David is referring to, we come up against that with, with. Uh, with the stone hollow subdivision as well as Nate Crowe, who's zoomed in here with a subdivision he wants to do. He's faced with the same situation with the county. So I just wanted to explain that to you all, have an understanding of that, so, I'm sorry.
Thank you, actually, that's a much better explanation than I could have done, so. Part of this would be, um, if you approve of the condition, we still obviously would have to have that done, there's already been fees paid to the county to start the process. And, and I think we're actually working with Nate Crowe, uh, contractors, well, that's gonna come and do all the actual digging and percolation tests. So that's, uh, worked out well, I think already, but planned. Um, we're also asking, uh, not for a waiver, but just a, a conditional. Uh, but we don't wanna necessarily go out and, and purchase the point nine, um, acre feet of water share yet until it gets approved and then we would obviously go do that, so. That would be, when we come to do the final. Then obviously that would be one of the conditions that we would have to have that, obviously have to have all of the, uh, things associated with the, um. Utah County Board of Health and the, and the, the septic system, et cetera, so. I believe that those were what we wanted to at least ask for a conditional approval so we can move forward. And spend, uh, some additional money, uh, moving this forward so that our, our son can, you know, and, and wife and family can move forward and. And obviously then, uh, start to look at what house to put up there and then come back, uh, with subsequent finals, uh, with all those conditions met, so that's what we're asking for.
Let me just clarify, one, the water share, that's actually not a condition for preliminary. We do want to know that, that they're pursuing. With the water share issue and have some lines on getting it, but when it comes to final, they'll have to have it. But, uh, we don't, that doesn't need to be part of a conditional thing for a preliminary plat, so just.
Great, thank you.
Any questions of? David on any of this? What kind of timing are you looking at moving forward? Things just as now currently as you're going forward?
Um, yeah, just whatever, you know, whatever the process takes, um, you know, once we get, uh, this to be approved, then. I think our son would start to look at, um. You know, obviously the bill, well, first of all, certainly where the septic system is gonna go. Uh, and then that will determine then where they place the house, obviously from the proper setbacks and things like that. There'll also probably be a determination, obviously with the final. We bring that forward is, are they gonna bring the driveway in either from the current driveway and or just off the road? So, but yes, the thought is, is that we would, whatever the process is, whatever the timing is, that we would just proceed one step at a time. And then what those plans would look like, uh, and all of that, so, uh, but. Yeah.
Something you're gonna do five years?
Oh, no, actually, they're planning on, as soon as they can literally start to dig and build, and that's what the intent would be, obviously going through the loan process and things like that.
Okay.
So no, this would be, um, this. Nothing rushed, but certainly not delayed even, from, from their part.
As interface are going up, they wanna.
Yeah, that's a factor now too. Any other questions?
And so your recommendation then is go ahead with this?
I, I don't see any reason not to, so. What we have, what we have. Any issues that are extraordinary or.
Does he wish he would have built his house back forty feet?
We, we purchased the home, so it was already built. And actually, that's why it's like I told, I told my son and daughter a lot of it, the only reason I'm doing this is because. It's my son and daughter and grandkids, um, and then, and the whole little walkway to Grandma's house too, but otherwise, absolutely not, uh, I, I love. Uh, how we currently have it and, um. We're gonna legally draw it up to where they can always sell it to me if that, if that happens.
Very well, thanks, hey.
All right, thanks. What's, what's the existing building?
Existing building, so we added a, um, a two-car garage.
Okay.
So that will go with the.
With the new lot.
Yeah, the new lot, yeah. And then, of course, uh, I'm gonna put some other restrictions where they can't cut down trees and stuff like that, but. Probably, I'll probably be a little more restricted than the city in certain ways, so.
Okay. Uh, let's take a vote on nineteen, this would be, uh, vote to approve this and refer it to the, uh, city council for their review. Their determination.
I know that we approved, uh, the recommendations.
I'll second that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Very well, thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much, appreciate it, yeah.
Before I just say, council.
Awesome, thanks, I appreciate everybody, yeah.
Let's see. Let's, uh. We don't see what we're gonna see.
Eighteen or nineteen, seventeen, annexation?
Seventeen, extension.
Seventeen.
You got it.
I've got.
Did you miss the wrong one?
Did you have that?
It's like eighteen or nineteen, twenty things on that.
Eighteen is resolved in agreement. Nineteen is still solo. On ours.
Yeah.
Do you guys need to accept it?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Or is it just you needed to hold a public hearing? When I pull it up?
That's, uh. You know. Say it there. I flayed that.
Somehow I think it was. Recording in progress.
There was a, I think there was a change in the state code this year. About.
About that existing.
Yeah.
Now that's currently part of Utah County, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll start in slide. So basically, we're just discussing what was part of the public hearing in regards to the Hyatt's request. For.
Robert Nelson.
Yeah, it, the act of kind of Robert Nelson, but the.
The Hyatt, the Hyatt had this, uh, uh, request. For grandfather and then the current use of that property.
Well, that was part. Of Robert Nelson's request, I'll bring that.
So it just says the legislator bodies. The municipal legislative body may take action. And that's where I'm thinking that.
Yeah, we're not that.
Utah State Code ten two four oh seven.
But this looks like we need to. Take a vote, just have a public hearing on it?
What kind of public hearing?
Right, just now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it may not, if they not require a voting petition.
Yeah, that's what you're wondering. Right. Okay. Here it is. It's ten dash five dash three.
So it says, before approving an annexation petition, the municipal legislative body shall hold a public hearing and provide notice of a public hearing. Gives the timeframe, uh, where it needs to be posted.
When I'm looking at a piece of requests, we still take the annexations, so.
No.
So this was like a low issue. Needing a call from us.
But does the city council have to approve it?
Yes, yes.
Based on our recommendation?
Well.
The only formative condition.
So I guess.
Without a recommendation.
We heard. Guess we can recommend anything we want to the city council.
Then your door is out the top of your brain.
I can, for the record, we did not have any letters come in, uh, a protest. We did have a meeting with Albridge and they were fine with the annexation. Um, that meeting was held by the city council on February twenty-second of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I was here. Yeah, I was here in present form too, they were in agreement. Are you most comfortable with making a short recommendation to city council? Looks like a win-win to me. You're welcome to say if you want, but you're welcome to leave too. That, we'll conduct that part of our business.
I'll recommend I go, I guess.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Okay, so we took that as a little bit twenty on our business.
Yeah.
Question?
Yeah.
Follow-up to number four of the public hearing. Let's come back to, uh. A couple of these have been once a day, we can't. Um, let's go to number eighteen, development agreement with Summit Creek. Um, I sent you a copy of this cost analysis that I did, uh, from looking at the proposal that Summit Creek has made. Um, and I'm the first to admit there's subjectiveness to it. Not exactly knowing how best to approach some of this. Uh, I suspect that Summit Creek will, will have a little bit of concern with some of it, and that's fine. And the city council may as well, they may say, hey, I don't think you did it right, go this way, one way or the other, I don't know. But it's, it's all, it's all my doing, so I did talk to an appraiser on trying to get a value from the roads and talk to him how best to do it. And so we kind of followed his suggestion in, uh, in putting the value on it. Uh, again, Summit Creek likely will feel that those, those values are high, and that's fine. They'll make their case to the city council. And I was trying, I tried to be enough, uh, explaining in this memo. And I was, Summit Creek just copied that, that memo, explaining enough as to what I did, so that everybody knew that. And saying, well, where do these figures come from? So, anyway, I'm not sure, uh, I know the city council wants a recommendation from us. As to whether we feel that it's, uh, a good, uh, thing to do to follow through with. So let's talk about it a little bit, uh, kind of see what the narrative there a little bit with these things and what Summit Creek wants to do, so.
One observation, uh, I felt like using that agricultural land as a base point for value of what the city would be giving out was probably very fair. Because if you looked at the current market value a lot in this area, the cost would be exorbitant, from, you know, it would be much higher than what an agricultural land was valued at. So I think that what you did was really very conservative in terms of assessing the values there. So I, I would be curious to know, uh, if, if Summit feels that that was too high, what would be a good measure that we could use? I mean, certainly lot values, I don't think would be a good measure, that would really be expensive.
They, they provided a, uh.
Yeah, but it was around two thousand and two.
Yeah, yeah.
That's twenty years ago.
Yeah, and anyway.
Which makes no sense to me, when you went in that hole.
Well, they were looking for a road that, that they needed, so that was, I think, the idea behind picking that particular thing, but I, but I. Yeah.
Some are not developed, but some are developed.
Yeah. Um, there's another aspect that I just learned today. There, there was some, apparently there's some agreements that were struck between the city and Summit Creek a number of years ago with some obligations that they were supposed to have for, uh, infrastructure. That likely, some of them may have been addressed since then, but some of them may not have been. Uh, for example, and I asked for, I asked for an example, so this is the one they gave me. That Summit Creek currently agreed to put another layer of asphalt on Summit Creek Road. They were, that, they're obligated to do that, uh, because they only, they went, they did go from, um. From the lower gate up to just below Wolfher Drive. But supposedly the obligation was to go from gate, top gate, down to level two hundred. Oh, through Four Seasons. So I'm trying to sort through that detail and, um. Those who know more about this than I do, uh, because they were around and involved in it at that time, I believe. Corbin and, and Joey and Craig. They feel that there's some things that Summit Creek is now agreeing to do as a result of this development agreement, that they already agreed to do five or six years ago. So the thought was, is it right to, for the city to give up for something that they obligated themselves to do?
Already.
And already, so we need to explore that more and see what specifically, what numbers go with that, what needs to be done yet, and try to define that more. So, uh, anyway, that's kind of part of it, but separate from, from this, so, anyway. Again, or any, any other thoughts that you have on it? I, I didn't, I have no idea how the figures were gonna come out as I, as I work it, I, you know. I wasn't playing with them or anything else, and, uh, we did get a couple of different estimates for our rock line for the city putting rock line ditches, and I changed that around as, uh, as the estimates came in. And the one that I had, uh, one was thirty-five dollars, uh, uh, linear feet. And we got one much less than that, so I changed that to the lesser figure. That's a good estimate, that's a current estimate on rock line ditches. But I did take out that, that somebody could criticize, and maybe rightfully so. I put in the roads the current value of what it would cost us now to put in sewer and, uh, waterline where that is maybe ten plus years old. And I didn't take anything away for, from depreciation for aged infrastructure. Uh, but in like, if we had to do it now, what would, what would cost the city to, to do that? And the same with the pavement, we took the current, current paper costs, what it would cost to pave the roads. So there were current figures used for that, and, and recognize the fact that the pavement is older and used, and some places not in the best condition and so forth, so those, those estimates likely are maybe on the high end.
Well, but, but the, the areas that we're talking about uh, along Eagle Nest and Cougar Run, really, yeah.
Wolfher, Wolfher Drive. Is the road given up?
Well, I know, but that's not finished.
No, that's.
That's just dirt.
Correct.
That's hard.
Yeah, it's not, it's not developed, so, I just, yeah.
But what I'm saying is that the roads that are finished now, which is really Cougar Run and down to the end of Eagle Nest and to that hole this way.
Yeah, okay.
Those don't get much use, because there are very few holes along there, and the holes that are there are very new. You know, you're talking Phelps, Mifflin's, Habers, Swenson's has been built, Johansson's. You know, those are the, the five holes that were built along that property. And all of those are within the last two years. Maybe three.
Yeah, three.
Maybe years, maybe three years old, and the rest are very new. So that part of the road has not had, you know, it's not like Willoughby Hills Drive.
Yeah.
Or even the Elfrarks and Eagle Nest, and they're a lot more news. But I, I think the question that I have is that, as I understand it, we're also would allow them, that part of this would become private road. Now, there's a responsibility for water and sewer along those existing roads, will, will the maintenance of that go to the HOA for Summit?
No, it will go to the city.
So it'll still be the city's responsibility.
And the extension of those into private roads, that will still be city responsibility, not for the roads, but for the water and.
For utilities.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so.
And we don't have responsibility for smell plowing, private roads.
Right.
So, and the private road maintenance will be on the HOA, not on the city. So there's a lesson.
But the facilities will still be the city's maintenance responsibility.
Yes.
Okay, because if that, if that went over to Summit, then that would concern me because as you said, we're talking about, you know, stuff that's ten, fifteen years old since those have been built. I mean, they were built when I moved here in twenty-two, that was already in existence.
Yeah.
And so it's been twelve years of this, so it's been more than twelve years that those utilities have been along there.
And the city wants to control those utilities.
Okay.
So. Any other questions? I'm too dumb to know what to ask. I used to be.
Now you're getting forced to get smarter, aren't you?
Yeah, now you're smart enough to get not asked. Uh, Ben, to give you an opportunity, you wanna?
Are you sure?
Say?
I appreciate it. Wayne and I spoke a little bit earlier today, and so, uh, appreciated, gave me a few minutes now to talk, um. So I guess the big, the big picture is just, we, you know, we want to know if the city will approve vacating those two portions of the road so that we can make some alterations and move forward by development, that, right, that. So if that ends up being your recommendation to the city council, that's really what we're trying to get to. Now, with that in mind, you know, Wayne did the, the late work of putting together some, you know, some analysis and, and numbers and things to try and show whether or not it benefits the city, right, and to what extent. Um, we provided some information and some estimates to, uh, to help Wayne, and he got his own. We do have, like Wayne said, we do have some, I guess, I don't know if the right word, disagreements or concerns with his numbers versus what we see and, and, you know, what, we can work that out. It comes to some agreement somewhere, you know, the idea of comparing the farmland to the road, we don't think that's super fair because there, because you have farmland that's kind of a blank slate, that's keep you super valuable to your point, or the other is a road and it's gonna stay a road. I mean, it's planted as a road, how much value does that really have in the city, I, I mean. You know, and so there's that sort of minor disagreement and then valuing like the water lines and the sewer lines, which the city's gonna keep anyways. We're not taking those, so we don't know that that's really a trade-off, because we're not taking those in his analysis, um. So I guess my point is at some point, and Wayne, and Wayne, you mentioned this, that we would like an opportunity to kind of present our side a little bit to whether it's you or the city council, just to make our points, right or wrong, just have an opportunity to, you know, make sure that, you know, we feel like we're being heard in our position on it, with the ultimate goal of hopefully being able to have those roads vacated so that we can take our master plan and kind of keep going, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree, but I pulled in, I said, I'm, I'm recommending to the mayor already that Summit Creek be invited to make their presentation to the city council.
Yeah.
That we're, that's only appropriate to give them that, that opportunity, explain themselves. Disagree with these figures, some of these, and that's fine too, they, they, they're vested in this thing. It's their own right to do that, I have every expectation that the mayor will.
Yeah.
Do that, so.
Steve's on, I don't know if you want to give him a minute, I apologize, I don't know if I have the right to do that, but he may have a comment or two, his hands are still.
Sure, Steve, uh, chime in.
Yeah, so, so, uh, Wayne, thanks for the work that you've done, I appreciate it, you know, I didn't, I didn't read it in its entirety. I, I did see some things and, and there, there are some items that, that I think, um, we, we've discussed internally that, you, you're right, we just have a different point of view on. Um, I, I think the, the highlight here is, uh, uh, is a couple of things. I, I think even in, in your memo, Wayne, um, you, you, the, the cost that the, that Summit Creek could be, is going to be absorbing, uh, and to, to finish that stuff is, is greater than the value of the roads a, a, as you, as you had put it in. I, but there's a couple of points that I want to, um, make as it relates to that. One is, I don't think the city has spent any money, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, on these roads. That, that work was done by the predecessor developer and then contributed to the city. So there's really what I'll call no out-of-pocket cash that the city has expended on, on those roads. The, the other one is, I think, uh, and I don't want to under, uh, emphasize this that the Lofer Drive, um, uh, request relates purely to a redesign of the road, right, because it's, we, uh, of the way that we want to lay out the lots. The other one, which is Eagle Nest, relates to now being able to take that cul-de-sac and make it into a through road so that we can, we can, uh, a- access the other property down below. So those are, tho- those are two things, so it's, it's really more of a redesign and reuse. The other thing I think that you, you need to take a look at, and you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, you probably have it in your memo is one is like four hundred and seventy-three feet, the other one is eight hundred and seventy-five feet. So we're not talking about large portions of streets as it relates to the total mileage inside the development. So i- it literally is taking what would be in front of four or five houses on one and five or six houses on the other, so it's, it's not very long at all, so that, that's just my comment. I, I, I thought that would be, uh, helpful for, for the, uh, council to know, so, or the planning commission to know.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, um, help me understand, just for argument's sake. If we had set, if Summit Creek, in second, would you, Mr. Jones? What is the bottom line implication of that? Because we're within two hundred thousand dollars between the two. So what, what does that mean? Is it, we, we, if we agree to do a swap because it's within two hundred thousand dollars? Or does it mean somebody has to any up to two hundred thousand dollars in order to do this swap? What is it, what's the bottom line?
It, the bottom line will be with the city council and how they approach it.
Well, I understand.
But my, my view in doing this was just to help everybody understand where, where values were in, in the mix. Almost the values are meaningless. If there's an exchange. If there's an exchange, it's going to be on principle, pretty much. It's not going to be because the value of our land is more than your land. I I don't see it being
But we don't know what the city council
No, we don't. That's right.
The city council would say, let's go ahead and swap, just like that. Or they could say, no swap, but you've got to give us two hundred thousand dollars.
Am I able?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I will.
So that's a per- great question, right? Because like like I said, at the end of the day, we're just trying to, you know, exchange, you know, us completing certain things in exchange for those roads coming back to us, right? And so on on this, from the city side, at least the way I would view it would be, we have like Bear Hollow, for example, that has sat incomplete for since two thousand, I don't know, six, maybe? I can't remember the exact date. It's been a while.
Yeah.
So what we're saying is, you know, the developer, hey, we will finish all this for you. We'll get it all done in exchange for this and it'll just, it'll alleviate all those issues of all those landlords that have been frustrated for fifteen years because they can't get to their lot. They can't build their home, infrastructure done. We'll finish all of that. And you, they hit the road and then we all go on a merry-go-round. As long as everyone agrees to it, right? But so that's where the trade-off too, right? We're going to alleviate some of those things that have been sitting there for so long unfinished because it hasn't been determined who's responsible and who's going to do it. Make the exchange, we'll do it.
But i- i- I I think we need to make it clear, it is not an exchange.
Right.
There isn't an exchange here. Right? It it's the city agreeing to vacate the land, right? That right now, there is currently, and Wayne, you can correct me, I I may be under a misunderstanding here. But I think the city has an obligation that it had previously bonded for and the bond been since expended to finish Bear Hollow and Lofer as they current ag- currently exist. Is that true or false? Or 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 maybe you don't know, and that's and that's okay, true.
Well, there's so, there's no doubt that there's some infrastructure there that the city is obligated to finish.
Yeah.
I'm not in a position to say, you know, this much or that much and we're we're going a lot by what you have put forth.
Yeah.
From, you know, from your understanding of things, so.
So 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 Severn, if you take a, if you take a look at it, and I appreciate Wayne's comment that that it, the values of of the roads isn't, you know, is maybe a moot point, right? We are not asking the city to contribute anything. Right? If the value of what we are giving or doing, okay, to to relieve this city of a potential liability is greater than what some purported value of the roads would be, we are not asking for the difference. Right? All we're all we're doing is saying, look, here here is an opportunity for us to complete the the items that are yet to be completed that maybe he were being made or some po- important, or in some portion obligations of the city that we are relieving. So I I don't want to think of it as like a land swap, right? Or or anything like that. There is an opportunity here for the infrastructure to be complete. You know, we're going to put X millions of dollars into this project and finish what we started, right? We just need a little bit of help with the redesign of two roads. The only way to get that redesign of those roads, because they have already been dedicated to the city, is to have you vacate them so that we can go back and redesign them.
That's true, but let, I I guess we may be, we're talking semantics, but there is an exchange. The exchange is the city's giving up those public roads that the city owns in exchange for you guys doing a lot of infrastructure work that needs to be done.
O- okay, and you can call it an exchange, and that's true, but I don't think you can talk about like a value swap of land, which is
Oh, I agree.
Where that conversation was going, and that's 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 not true, right?
No, I I understand that, yeah. Those values were just to to help everybody understand of some possible values that each had. I mean, if we go to the citizens and say, uh, we're looking at this this swap or we're going to give up these roads for work that that Summit Creek's going to do and they say, well, what's the value of those roads to the city? Say, well, geez, we don't know. Well, that's not the right answer. This is a value placed on them and that that value may be high or may be low, but this is, this is kind of a value that we're using to help us further assess this this uh recommendation proposal that's been made.
And I and I think too, in terms of of the roads, because the city is giving up public roads that will become private roads. And so there is value added to Summit to be able to market this area as being, these are private roads behind a a gate that is secure. And so there is marketing value to Summit for this as well.
Yeah. So there's a lot of factors that are part of this. Very good. Steve, thanks for your comments. Appreciate it.
So what do we want to do with this tonight?
I would like to entertain a a motion and one way or the other, as far as a recommendation to the city council on on accepting, accepting it or or not. We can, if those figures are bothersome to us, then set those figures aside and say, just on principle, what what do we think is best for the city? And and as we look at this and understand it a little bit more, is that something that we think the city ought to engage in and do or not? And again, council will be the most of the deciders on it, but but the mayor would like the recommendation.
Okay, let me, let me, let me make some attempts. I move that we recommend to the city council the approval of this action that will give value added to the city in terms of the developer finishing utilities and roads in exchange for the value added that will be given to the developer for marketing his property or their property, should say it's, their property. Does that make sense to anybody? Maybe it makes a bit
I would just make, I mean, I don't want to tell you guys what to say. When you say completing roads and where, you might want to define where. So Thousand Oaks D or you want to interf
Okay, so we're completing Bear Hollow and Lofer Drive.
And anything remaining on Eagle Nest and Cougar Land as well. So all of D.
Well, for me, let me
Hey, hey, just 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 to be real real clear there, we're going to be putting in the infrastructure, but there's also a reimbursement agreement that's part of the development agreement for those people that aren't lot owners on that property. Just just to be clear.
Oh. Yeah.
We're not putting that road
The properties that have already almost won out.
That's correct.
Okay.
So we're we're gonna, we're gonna complete the job. And still, that would be the same thing as what the city would do. We're just going to be funding the cash to do it. And we're going to be paying for the stuff that's, you know, on our own. So I I I want to be, sorry, Jody, go ahead.
I'm a little nervous about that reimbursement part.
But that's part of the development agreement. That's why I said you, we need to deal with the annexation here, right?
Steve, Steve, let me, here's the issue that we're concerned a little bit about in that. There's some things in that agreement that you guys have already agreed to do, correct?
Don't don't know.
Okay, my understanding there is. So the question becomes now, uh, why should that be part of the development agreement if that's something that you guys have already agreed to do?
Because number one, it's not in in writing anywhere, Wayne.
Well, I'm not sure about that either.
Okay, so so
Research that now.
He he, I guess here's here's the point, right, that I'm trying to make, and I didn't do it very artfully. I think the the question is, are you, what is the recommendation that you have to the city council? If the recommendation to the city council is that they, you know, that as part of the development agreement, that will be considered that Summit Creek will front the cost to complete the roads under plat D and F being Bear Hollow and will complete the road uh or relieve the city of its obligations under plat D and F, which is probably the best way to state it. And, you know, I think there's some language here that, you know, Jody can help you do much more artfully than I can. But I want to make sure that we don't tie too many things together because some of that stuff is going to be part of the development agreement i- as go through, and I want to make sure that that stuff is, you know, clear, separate and distinct. And Wayne, if we've made written agreements to do stuff, then we've made written agreements to do stuff. I'm just not, I may not be aware of it, which is part of the reason that I want the development agreement so that we do have written agreement of what we are, what we have agreed to do. Specifically as it relates to what's the subject matter here tonight.
Yeah, I I think the simpler we can make this recommendation at this stage, that the better off we are, yeah, better mess with the city council.
You think it's better that we're trying to separate this from the construction and development agreement? As a
Yes.
You?
Yes, because it can always be included when the time comes if both sides think that's the best thing to do. So we've, we've got a, you know, general understanding of what what Summit Creek wants to do. Uh, we can say, as outlined in the development agreement, that's where it's come to light, but not tied into directly this part of the road or that part of the road or this rock line ditch, you know, but do it more generically and and generalities and then if we need to, if we need to um dissect it or we can do that later and not be locked in to some, something that the planning commission is is recommended.
W- Wayne, can I make a recommendation to you?
Sure.
I I I think you 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 kind of hit the nail on the head. The simpler you can make the the resolution that Severn, you know, is going to put forward, probably the better. And it's not as if the city council is only going to read the written recommendation of the planning commission. They are going to ask you for your opinion and you will be able to verbally give the color commentary that may be needed for that recommendation at that meeting. I don't know that you need to try to weave the color commentary into the recommendation that you're trying to do this evening. The ju- just to, just from a style standpoint, you're going to have that opportunity. So I I wouldn't try to cut it too close, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, I I agree.
Okay, I move that we recommend to the city council when they approve the transfer of currently developed roads and roads to be developed, i.e. Bear Hollow and Lofer Drive to Summit Creek Development Corporation. That simple enough? Not worth the thing?
I didn't, I don't want to say anything because then it looks like, take this off, I'm another team, right, so.
I did
Somebody else can try this, I want, I don't know what I have to
My thoughts are, and let's take this round a little bit too, is is we recommend that the city approve the uh the transfer of uh certain portions of South Alver and Eagle Nest uh to Summit Creek
With Bear Hollow.
Not Bear Hollow.
Not Bear Hollow.
Okay.
Um, with the with the understanding that Summit Creek will do certain identified roads along with infrastructure that have been identified in the development agreement. Something along that nature. So we're dealing with stuff that's already, it's already identified, but in a more generic sense. And then that could be, that could be fine too. As this process goes forward between city council and developer. But to make it gen- as generic as possible with with, I guess presenting I ideas and principles more than specific data and information, use infrastructure instead of rock line ditches and and curb and gutter and that sort of thing, just required infrastructure. I mean, our our recommendation that that doesn't lock us into things that are not germane to the to the agreement.
So then with what Stephen and Finn suggested is that in our sales pitch to the city council
Yeah.
We've talked about value added to the city, value added to the developer.
Yeah, I'd I'd leave, I'd leave that out.
I know, and I I but
Yeah.
When we have the city council meeting, you know, that's part of what we can say to the city council when it's towards consideration
Yeah.
Of this recommendation to accept.
That's a
Well, not a land swap.
They're going to have a public hearing too.
I understand.
So, I mean, there's an opportunity, you know, for those who are, including planning commission members to say, you know, we look at this and and have their own comment uh to that as a citizen, resident of the city. But but treat it really generic at this stage of recommendation to them.
Yeah. Severn, I think you're, I think you're exactly right. Call it a sales pitch or whatever. They they're going to ask you for your recommendation and why you, why you are recommending the the way you are, right? So, yeah, uh, I I I think you're exactly right, that one.
So is that your motion, Wayne?
Yes, and I'll put it, I'll put it right into y'all so we kind of have a understanding.
I will second.
Okay. I'm in favor.
I?
I.
Did you say I, Wayne?
Yes, I did. I, so I'll put it over and together and thank you.
I was waiting for Wayne to oppose his own motion, so I thought that was
I didn't put that much time into this to oppose it.
Thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome. I wanted to review the two things my my way of comments. We need to really give a lot of scrutiny to to preliminary and final plats. We're finding that mistakes get made by engineers, by every, everybody along the way. So we'll try to get things to us beforehand uh so that we do have an opportunity to 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 scrutinize it, my way of setbacks, the notes that are on them. And um, we we get to have a bit of problem with setbacks where right setbacks not getting included, and this goes back to engineers' faults. They're the ones that are putting these plats together and they're plats together and they're not paying close attention to it and they won't setbacks get there and get recorded. And up to now, we feel obligated to look like whatever gets recorded, because people are like, well, it's based upon that setback. It's not fair to them to come along and say, well, we're changing the setbacks now. So we, we just want to scrutinize them every which way, and it takes everybody doing that.
I'm having problems understanding why this line of, so. Don't you think we're going to do it that way?
Yeah, we missed things. That's, that's why. We missed, we missed setbacks, for example.
Four seasons.
Yeah, we missed some down in four seasons.
Plan A.
We're, we're, we just, their, their engineer puts a wrong setback and we miss it? It's that there's a setback, but it's a wrong one for R119.
R119 is fifteen or one side, forty on the other.
Front rear.
What have we missed there?
What about front and rear?
Thirty and thirty.
Okay, you're going to be our setback person.
Make sure that you get all the setbacks.
No, I don't think we missed anything that I've been involved in in our.
Four seasons, Plan A was recorded with fifteen and fifteen on some of the sides and not fifteen and twenty. Uh, we also had that problem in. Yeah. So we relied on our engineer to catch it. I mean, unfortunately, it didn't, they didn't, um.
I mean, I've never been comfortable with setbacks in our one ninety. Because if your, if your permit has a twenty on the left side and fifteen on the other, then the one next to you has to have twenty on your fifteen foot side and fifteen on the other. And so it always pushes off to the next lot. But I've never been comfortable with that. But that's the way R119 was written?
Yeah.
You can amend that. You can propose to amend it and hold a public hearing to do so.
So those kinds of things we may look at in the future and see where we need to make some changes to be more uniform with, with things. So, um, I just, you know, just, I just want to make sure that we're real careful.
Well, I know that, I mean, I've heard John's story. Or affirmative alternate planning commission member.
Yeah.
That said, he was told what the setbacks were for his lot by a city official, which were absolutely wrong. And I don't know why this city official thought that. We just need to be careful. Is, is there not being course against these engineers?
Through this, and, and we've even, we've changed a few, we've amended, our code allows us to amend a plat that's been done wrong. But we realize sometimes we're late in the game.
Right.
Don't realize.
Which affects the whole.
Be, before a property sold, things like that. So we, you know, a driveway, driveway setback is different for different zones. And sometimes we we over, overlook that, not just, I mean, it says, the driveway is supposed to, the setback goes all the way back. It's not just at the street side.
Right.
There, there's just so many nuances.
Well, it doesn't really.
It does, it says that. The driveway, until I go back to what.
To the house.
Well, yeah, to the pad, you know, that's in front of the garage.
And then, and then you could change it.
Yeah.
Beyond that.
Yeah.
But if the, if the front setback is fifty feet, then the fifteen foot from the side, if it happens to be R1 dash two feet or D, then it's fifty feet from the side and it goes all the way back for fifty feet.
No, no, if the house is setting seventy five feet back, and there's a driveway that goes all the way seventy five feet, it goes seventy five feet back.
Where the requirement is fifty foot setback.
For the front.
Yeah.
Nothing to do with the driveway. Driveway could be on the front setback. So the, the front setback has nothing to do with the distance from the driveway, from the, from entering the driveway to, to the house. If the house sets back seventy five feet, then the driveway, when you reach fifty foot setback, the driveway can't now come over the property line. It's a driveway still.
Okay.
So again, there's these.
But if, but if the setback, if the house is setback fifty feet, then the driveway has to be fifty feet from the side.
Back fifty feet.
Back fifty feet.
Correction, if their, if their garage is on this, on that side, maybe the garage is back behind your house.
But you've still got a setback if it's on the other side.
Well, you do, but it's, it's, it's a driveway setback. So wherever that driveway takes you, it has to be setback, whether it's side of the house, whether it's on the front of the house.
That doesn't make any sense.
To the back of the house.
Makes no sense.
Well, that's the way our.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you that my house is full. Because I've got a drive, I've got a garage, which is really my slot.
Set, yeah.
It's the way back. And the driveway goes all the way back to there. But it's not fifteen feet away beyond the front plane of the house.
But where's your actual garage?
Well, it's, it's on the front plane of the house.
It's not the detached garage.
Well, there is a detached garage.
But now it's really no longer a driveway, it's a path back there. I, I mean, that, these are the things we deal with. And you've dealt with some of those severing. These side plants, and with a lot, some are judgment calls, but we just, just need to be careful. Well, I'm going to redo what our code says. So I, we've done a pretty good job. I agree. Want to make sure that some of these loose ends we don't, don't overlook. Uh, that's it. Um.
So that really was reviewing me in general.
No, it's for the whole planning commission, because we reviewed preliminary and final plans. Now, that kind of thing, yes, because that's part of the zone.
You're being on the, on the, on the development.
I, yeah.
But not on the individual lot's plants, we haven't been.
No.
We haven't done.
No, 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 that's right.
On any site.
But I'm talking about preliminary and final plan. That's where we're kind of seeing.
But there are no driveways on it.
No, I hear, I just used that as another example, and we need to be careful. And then we have been on the, on those. So this is something here now, but. Open space. That's an issue with, um, two residents and their expert witnesses about what open space is. And I just want to make sure that we're on the same wavelength of that. Open space is defined in our city code generally under disturbed soil. Uh, I think we all know what open space is with, about if there's no building necessarily on it. There might be trails or there may be a fact. Uh, in this one platter, it's already attached to the name, Platte Seaton Smokes. The, the park is considered open spaces. Given to the city is open space. There's another part in our ordinance. And to me, and, uh, Herman has given the best explanation here. That open space is a noun. There's another place in our ordinance talking about side setbacks. It says, side setback is the open space between side of the house and the property line. Okay? That open space is an adjective. It's not quote unquote, open space.
It's not the same as the part.
It's not the same as part?
The part. No, granted, but I think that that engineer is trying to say it's the same as the part.
You're right. You're right.
And you can't do anything in that space.
Exactly right.
Which is ridiculous.
So that is not open space now, now open space. That's an adjective. It's just terminology. We can just assume, say, it's space between this and that.
Right.
But they use the term verbiage on the space.
To use my same example. From my property line to my building, which happens to be a garage on that side, is the required fifteen foot setback. Then that fifteen foot setback, there is a concrete path that goes down to my shop. Under that engineer's definition, it shouldn't have that, because it has to be under disturbed ground.
Yeah.
Ridiculous.
You're right. I just want to make sure.
I mean, you, you look at virtually any house.
I know.
It's not under disturbed ground, just because it's not in the buildable where the building can be.
Yeah.
I mean, even Ben probably agrees with that.
Right.
Yes.
I want to talk a bit about our fencing ordinance. We passed one for R119. And I'm already seeing some little questions in it. For example, one thing, we, we intended it to be a companion to our fencing ordinance that we have.
Right.
And that the same fencing material would be used. I think.
Yeah.
In this ordinance, as is in our city code, city code.
It's definitely not the way it reads.
No, and it, it, it's not, it did get included and it's not written that way. So, um, this has come to light a little bit with changing the idea of changing the setbacks, which we've talked about. From, uh, on the front, the property, well, fences or hedges taller than forty two inches shall not be located less than thirty feet from a property line, butting a street and can run along the side where rear block property lines. That was the change that we were agreeing to make. And, um, as long as it didn't extend past the front plane of the house. Then went back to what we passed with the R119, and it's not that clear. Well, as well defined in that part. Rather than start piecing things, but let's see if we can kind of put this together more and make it more, I guess, coherent or more, less worded in such a way so that there's fewer ambiguities that come, come from, from it itself. So it took me back to the R119 ordinance that we passed, and I can see, you know, a few areas in there. And on top of that, this issue that we ran into recently with Severin and John looking at a fence that, uh, potentially was questionable because it was being made, it was made of wire mesh. And it doesn't say that wire mesh can't be used, but it says where wire mesh can be used. But wire mesh is not included in the acceptable material category. But should it be? There's, I mean, this was done a long time ago. I, I took a ride, I was up in Saratoga Springs a couple of weeks ago. Been riding around the city up there, and there's all kinds of very attractive wire mesh fence. Yet we allow chain link. You know, as, as far as, as long as it's vinyl cover, not galvanized.
Yes.
So, and to me, that's not as attractive as, you know, a, a square like this or, you know, of wire mesh fence. We looked up all kinds of definitions that we could find. And, I mean, wire mesh is, is just, there's, there's hardly any bounds to what it's not. And so, um, and again, like you say, I wrote, ran up to Saratoga Springs and there are a lot of attractive wire mesh fences. Robert Nelson has made that comment to me as well, that that is being more and more used and more and more popular now, for fencing material for between posts and things. So I, I just wanted us to start thinking about that a little bit. And see what, what, I think I sent some time ago, a copy of what our proposal is going to be as long as, as far as the fence on property line. And it, that's not related to this, but the, the R119 is. And how that fits into our, we need to probably tweak that a little bit to make it fit into our ordinance storm.
Well, that's technically. They fit how wire mesh down in some, in down in four seasons. Because it is not specifically excluded. We literally wrote R119.
You're, you're right, but maybe there's an exclusion in our current ordinance.
Yes, in fact, it's included.
In sport courts and.
And around gardens and.
And there's third, yeah, third, but you're right.
But it is, in our current ordinance, for everybody else but R119, you can't have wire meshes of fence. But that section does not apply to Summit. Because what the new ordinance says, and Jody, we've got a problem with we've got a problem with the way we printed the copy of R119 that is on the website. Because the citation says.
On the website, the R119 fencing ordinance, is that right, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, let me look at it.
It says in, in twenty twenty one dash three, in paragraph eight, it says ten dash eleven dash eight, eight, period. And what it should be is ten dash eleven dash eight, V, period. Someone mistyped that second eight. It should have been a V in seven, eight. So the one that's online on the city website has the wrong citation. I mean, that citation does not exist in the ordinance. Because then right after that, it said, it talks about, uh, six, seven and eight in the other fixing ordinance has to be followed. And the screen stuff, the wire screen is before that.
Wire mesh?
The wire mesh. Where it says you can have wire mesh, or where you can't have wire mesh.
See, um, there's no part that says you can't have wire mesh.
It says type of fence. Two, acceptable fence material includes natural stone, wood, vinyl, vinyl coated chain link wire and wrought iron. Masonry and concrete may be used for fence posts or feathers only. Plain, not vinyl coated chain link fence. Wire mesh and vinyl mesh may be used for sport courts, garden and animal enclosures. But if, so it can't be used otherwise. But that section. But that section is not part of the R 119.
That's correct. But I, I guess my point is acceptable, acceptable fence materials doesn't say only. It says they include.
But the, the next sentence says you can't use it.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does. Which is contradictory.
It says, you're talking about the plain, the one that starts with plain?
No part of a fence will
No part of a fence should
Plain, not vinyl coated chain link fence, wire mesh and vinyl mesh may be used for sport courts, gardens, and animal enclosures. That's the only place you can use it.
It doesn't say that.
Oh, I'm sure it does.
It does not.
Oh, come on, Wayne.
Really? It says
It gives you everything. It doesn't say, or other materials, and the other one
It says that can be used.
No, it says it says natural stone, wood, vinyl, vinyl coated chain link fence, wire, and wrought iron. They, they, I didn't read it very well. Vinyl coated chain link wire and wrought iron, period. It doesn't say anything else or other similar materials. It doesn't say that.
It doesn't say
It limits it.
I agree.
It limits it to those things.
No, I guess that's the interpretation. That's interpretation. It doesn't say
Why would it, why would it say you could use wire mesh in one section for these specific issues? And then you now say that you can use wire mesh for any fence?
See
No, no. No way. No way.
I think that's the intent, as you say, but that's not what it says.
Well, it does say that.
Maybe to you.
Because it doesn't say, or other similar materials. If it said that, I would agree with you.
But it says acceptable fence materials are include.
And that's it. Although, those are the only things that are acceptable.
It, it doesn't say these are
Yes, it does. They are, and then it lists. It doesn't say such as. It says are.
Plain. Acceptable fence materials include. It doesn't say acceptable fence materials only include, or acceptable fence materials include, is such excluding.
Come on, Wayne. You know what the intent was.
This is the things
You know what the intent was.
These are the things that we get into.
Problem is our
The same in the house, you know?
Once again, why would they say wire mesh only for this purpose?
It doesn't say only. Plain, vinyl, chain link fence, wire mesh, and vinyl mesh may be used for sport courts, gardens, and animal enclosures. It doesn't say you can't use a a wood fence for animal enclosures. You can. Wood is, is okay to use, but it doesn't, it doesn't say that in the, in the garden part. It identifies three different kinds.
But it says it in the first part.
Wood, it does.
Yeah.
But that, that's the point.
But it doesn't say wire mesh in the first part.
It says in the second part.
But it doesn't say it in the first part.
But the first part is not excluding, doesn't say.
I don't agree. I'm sorry. I don't agree.
Anyway.
We can't slow them.
It seems unusual.
That's one of the things that concerns me. Yes, and you have not told us when we were talking about fences. Just remember, that fencing ordinance is remembered back to the planning permission. That's why we're talking about.
Well.
Because they wouldn't accept always be Muslim, right?
That too. That too.
Not that too. That's the only reason.
No, the issue came up because this person wanted to use wire mesh as fencing material on that side plan that you and John reviewed.
Right.
So, it's
But that's
It's more than that referral back from the city council.
Well, that's a further factor that came in later.
It is. Yeah. But we haven't done anything yet with the kickback from the city council.
I understand.
So, as we're looking at that, but let's, let's see if we need to address greater issues than just that one, that one thing. That's why I'm bringing it up here, to see what else, what do we need to take into account if we're going to be redoing the fence ordinance? Or not?
Are we going to redo the fence ordinance?
Not entirely, but do we need to?
The, the proposal that we made to the city council was basically to eliminate R 119 fencing ordinance. Because we said, you said, in the city council meeting, that this new ordinance would cover all of Woodland Hills, no matter what the zone was. We'd have one fencing ordinance covering everything.
Do we want that? That's kind of the direction that I thought we were headed with that.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
That you could put a fence along a property line.
Correct.
Regardless of where it was in the
And that was part of our, part of what we talked about.
Right.
As a planning commissioner, a part of what you said to the city council. We didn't want to have eight, ten feet of no man's land between two properties that maybe nobody would take care of. And that's why we wanted to be able to put it on the property line
Right.
for the rear and the side.
Well.
As long as it wasn't next to a road.
I, I didn't, you think I misspoke?
No.
Okay.
Well, I agree with you.
Okay.
Does the city council know that?
Well.
So, whatever you go back to the city council and say.
Yeah.
We don't agree with you.
We don't agree with you. This is our recommendation. Turn it down if you want to then, you know?
I think that's what's so frustrating to me about the city council. They don't think things through very well.
I didn't hear that.
I mean, don't
They got out of the record, Joe.
I'm not even
Well, I know, I know. We've not did this before with them on things. They take stuff back to us. It's just part of the process. That's why they get paid who we do.
You know what? I think the problem, so it was with ten, eleven, eight, B, one, E. And it's fences or hedges taller than forty-two inches shall not be located less than thirty feet from a property line butting a street right away run along the side or rear block property lines as long as the fence does not extend beyond the front plane of the residence.
Right.
Now, that makes sense to you and I, but I don't know if the planning permission, I mean, the city council totally got it.
Now, in the R 119, number three, says, says a fence may be placed on property line provided there is no vision impairment created that would affect the safety of any type of traffic at a specific site. You know, say that in this other ordinance, that's a good thing to have. I mean, if somebody puts a fence up that is going to impede traffic site, we don't want that. So, I'm
Well, and, and I think, you know, the, the one thing that stood out to me with the city council taking your back to us is that the issue with the corner lot. Because when you talk about a corner lot, you know, two sides are running a road. And so, the way it's written, both of those sides would have to have things thirty feet back. Because it's a running a road. And so, I agree with the city council that, and, and the way we've, we've said it, in what we proposed, was we couldn't have a fence beyond the front plane of the house. And so, if the front plane of the house is a running a road here and not here, you know, the front is on, on this side, you've got it set back at least thirty feet, because every setback in the front in any zone is at least thirty feet. So, you've already got it set back thirty feet from the road because you can't extend beyond the front plane of the house. But on the side, you've got it set back at least thirty feet on that side. So, you could have it on the property line avoiding the road if it's not in front of the house. You understand what I'm saying?
On the, on the side?
On the side. Because you've still got, you've got that thirty feet back from the intersection. All right? So, you've still got a clear view as you come up to that stop sign or whatever it is. You've got a clear view of traffic coming the other way, because it's already set back at least thirty feet.
But I, I understand what you're saying. That con, that contradicts what we
That's why we need to change for a corner lot. I don't think we need to change for a house that's not on a corner lot.
Yeah, I
I think that thirty feet back from the road still needs to be kept in there.
I agree. What about the verbage that is in the R 119? Just indicate a fence may be placed on property line provided there's no vision impairment.
Well, and there would be no vision impairment.
But to allow that, to allow that fence on a property line on the side as long as there was no vision impairment, you know?
Well, and the thing is, you've already got it set back thirty feet.
On the front.
On the front. And so, that side, if you're on the property line, it's already thirty feet back to the other spring. And so, there shouldn't be any vision impairment. You know, there's a car coming up this road or a car coming this way, you've got, you know, it's set back thirty feet. We had the charting here drawn out for it, but
Do, do you not think that we need then that extra in there about vision impairment, that there's, because of the setback, it's not, don't worry about it? Leave it alone?
I don't think we need it. You're right. That's the other, the, the other fence that we would allow in the front of the house can't be more than forty-two inches wide. And that shouldn't impair any vision.
Right. So, the running a road on the side is not an issue?
I don't think so.
Okay, I I kind of read that.
You know, so the, the part of how in the other um, in the other fencing regulation.
In the ordinance itself?
In the ordinance itself. Then we might have to say something about uh, the thirty-foot setback.
The setback, the thirty-foot setback is addressed in
Is it just in R?
Oh, it, it, well, this is part E. Since fences or hedges taller than forty-two inches shall not be located less than thirty feet from a property line butting a street.
Where are we reading?
It's E of the fence ordinance, uh, under B, B one, E.
Yeah, okay, there it is. All right. And see, that, we'd have to change that. Because on a sidewalk, they should put, you know, on the side of the house, break the power on the property line.
Where would be the best place to put this other, this new proposed ordinance? Make it part of D? Modify E? Because that's what we're, we're changing. In fact, we're saying now that that was ten, eleven, eight, B, one, E. So, that's what we were modifying with the new ordinance.
Yeah.
There's a conflict.
Yeah. Yeah. We've still got some issues with F too. Because that's the seventy-five percent open.
Yeah.
And which would mitigate towards water mesh.
Not necessarily.
Well, I mean, water mesh would be the seventy-five percent open.
Yeah, okay.
See what I mean?
Yeah.
Whereas a solid vinyl fence would not.
And I think that's why they are, that is become a popular feature, because it's, it doesn't, it provides the, not the privacy, but the
Well, it does.
Well, a little bit, but more the security of, you can see through it, so. But, yeah, dogs can get out, kids go in, play in the backyard.
Or you mean the wire mesh?
Wire mesh, yeah.
Yeah. Here it can jump over.
Yeah. It's less than eight feet tall.
Yeah. I haven't had any here in my garden yet. It hasn't been
How tall's your garden fence?
Eight feet?
Eight feet.
But it's wire mesh. At least six or seven square feet.
Do we want to do anything with? See, that, another thing with this R 119, once more, is we just said what it could be. Barbed wire, strand wire, or chain link fence, no, that, yeah, can't be used. But we didn't say what can be used. I guess, I think our intent was to refer back to what can be used in our in the type of fence in our regular ordinance, but
Well, if
You didn't reference back to that.
The, the way it talks about it in the R 119 says all other requirements contained in ten, eleven, eight, B, section six, seven, and eight, which doesn't have an clue.
With the tie level. Perimeter fences for home construction in the R 119 zone with low over late must meet the following standards.
I know, but you go down to eight. Since all other requirements contained in ten, eleven, eight, B, section six, seven, and eight of the fence answer shall be complied with.
But, but those are permitting. They're not type of fence or
I know, and that's why I'm saying, everything in A or through one, I'm sorry. One through five is not included in the R 119 zone. It just says B, six, seven, and eight apply. So, one, two, three, four, five don't apply to R 119. Which includes the type of fence.
You're talking about B, one, two.
One, two, three, four, five.
So, I mean, saying a type of fence doesn't apply then?
Yeah.
In the R 119?
Yeah.
They can build it with whatever they want.
Apparently.
So, our previous discussion was moot. Well, now, because it was, because it's down there, the R 119.
Because we don't say the only thing we say that has anything to do with the type of fencing is in five. Vision barrier fences are permitted, provided in the other area with safety and order. So, that's a solid wood, solid vinyl, you know, something like that. You know, something like that.
I completely spaced that. What you guys did too. Is you didn't, you were hesitant on allowing that kind of fence down there.
That was after we talked about, we basically said we need to talk about this more, we're concerned about it.
But what you're pointing out to me here now, which I agree with, is there's no criteria for the kind of fence they can have.
Well, what, technically what I, we sent back to Jody. Was that they did not provide all the information that they needed to provide. In their permit request. Because that part is covered in R one nineteen, that's part of six. Which is six, seven, and eight are needed to be applied in. In six, A, three.
Permitting construction.
Yeah, they didn't have all the information we needed to be needed. And that's why we, where we initially sent it back.
Okay.
And then we started having the discussion about. About what it says over in, in E, I mean F, or not E and F, but two, two A. Uh, and then I realized later that that's really not part of R one nineteen. The way it's written.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we either need to make all of the applicable to R one nineteen. And then we need to straighten out the discussion we had earlier, if not a little needed. About whether or not wire mesh is permitted. To me, it's, it's not, but to you, it, it can.
For the R one nineteen zone.
Why, for any?
It is.
For any? No, it's not.
For R one nineteen?
It doesn't say that. It, they, and they're silent, but it's silent in R one nineteen. So, yes, in that sense, you could say, yeah, you can make it out of anything you want. You can even make it out of cord to wire. In R one nineteen.
Well, yes, you can say no, you can't.
Why not?
Cause it says right here.
Where?
Under nine. Under nine, category.
I know, never heard of it.
For the. Yeah, there's a nine there. For the R one nineteen, not on the, not on our own, not on.
No, no, R one nineteen.
Yeah.
I might not be on the updated ALP ordinances yet, you might have to go onto the city website and pull it because.
That's the one that Trent Moore.
Yeah, should be, well, because when it went from Word to Adobe, it took that eight and made it into a B. I mean, that B and made it into an eight.
Okay.
Therefore, I've corrected on the PDF version and I've asked. Uh, Marcy to upload that onto the city website.
What nine says is no barbed wire, strand wire, or chain link fencing is approved to use.
Okay. See, I was looking at the original that we had approved, and it doesn't have a nine. My thought of the original and what we. Sent forward to the city. And it does not have a nine on it.
I think there was an update to that. Several of that.
I was looking, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not arguing this, we're not on that. Well, they're actually ten.
Yeah, it is, that's right. There's a ten. That's where we allow fencing.
So we've got the same issue going. What's the difference between wire mesh and chain link? Cause chain link is not authorized in R one nineteen. In nine. And yes.
I agree, there's no, there's not, there. Chain link fencing is in a specific kind of fencing. And that's the only difference that I know of, but everything else. Is wire mesh, a whole lot of categories for wire mesh, but there is a specific category for chain link fencing.
I know, it's nice to say, the only thing we've seen, unless you found something that I haven't. Is that the wire mesh, it's either a square. Or it's a four by four square, or a two by four rectangle.
That's what most of my scene, but when you go online, you see a whole bunch of other kind of what they just. General category called wire mesh fencing. But those are the two primary.
I think what, you know, when I did the search on looking for it. And put in wire mesh, it came out four by four. And I put in. Another term and it came out two by four.
See, chicken wire is wire mesh.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's.
So, do we need to define what kind of wire mesh is appropriate? Is chicken wire appropriate?
I don't think it would be.
So do we say wire mesh in two by four configuration?
Four by four, maybe, to include, I don't, I don't know. Or as approved by the planning commission?
Oh, dear.
So.
So what do we do for the city council?
I mean, they, we've already had our votes here. They've already had their votes here. And they're remitting the facts to us.
Well, we. Absent these other things, if we don't want to readdress them right now. We just send this back to them and say, our vote's the same, we didn't change it?
Well, I think we need to change.
Pardon?
I think for you to change.
Which?
The part about thirty feet back from the side yard, that's. A bunch of road, since the way it is now. You're gonna have, you can't have a fence thirty feet away from the road, and the fence has to be thirty feet away from the, from the road. And so if you're on a floor lot.
Yeah.
That means both the front and the side has to be thirty feet back. So we've got to make some adjustments.
Unless it is a side yard. Cannot be located less than thirty feet from the property line abutting a street. Unless it's a side yard.
Yeah.
And can run along the side or rear lot lines.
Yes.
Without work?
I think you'll like.
Some might, I know my daughter lives in Montana, Missoula. And they had a corner lot right there. There's no fence on the front. And no fence on the side, but it, the, the side. The, the fence could not be. In front of actually the back plane of the house.
Oh, okay.
Because of the corner lot, they, they, they wanted more. Traffic vision on that corner than the front plane of the house would do.
But then, so, so the front setback could maybe be something easy, but maybe that's the reason.
Yeah, for setbacks.
No, the setbacks, the setbacks were about thirty, but it's still, I noticed that all the corner houses. No, that's not true either. Cause there were a few houses that corner locks that had fences in the front, so I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, I. Seems to me that the thirty foot setback, and you pull up to that street, you've, you've got vision of vehicles coming down the road.
I mean, if, if your floor lot. Is, well, let's just say. No, I don't think it's. So this is the road. If your corner lot is here, then you're coming down this way. And the stop sign is here. And you're gonna see everything from probably back here. There's a house sitting here, one side of the house is like this. So you're gonna have vision on what's coming down this road from there back here. If you're on this side, okay. No, if you're on this side, that was this, if you're on this side, then you're coming down this way. You're still gonna have a, almost a single amount of vision. It's going to be back behind the front plane of the house. You know, if this is the front plane of the house, you know, you're gonna see. The fence been rolling over here, you're gonna see, before you get to that corner, you're gonna be able to see. Anything that's coming down that street. And certainly when you're here, you're gonna see that. But we don't want a six foot fence sitting on the property line on this corner.
No.
That's right, this one.
But I think thirty foot back to the plane, I think we're good.
Well, nothing really goes, we got fifty foot setbacks. So that's even more.
Yeah. Down there, they don't have the trees, of course, they'll plant, they'll add trees, things eventually.
And edges.
So, yeah, but still, when you pull up to the intersection.
You gotta keep, and you're thirty, forty, fifty inches or below.
Yeah, yeah.
Is a hedge not a fence?
No, it's, and, and forty, yes, it is.
Yeah, but they're talking about equally, but reference to say, edges and fence.
Yeah. Got it, it's in forty inches.
Now, I don't.
Wayne, did, did we ever deal with Nick Cross's situation?
Yeah, I don't, he hasn't put his hand up, but I, I sent him an email today.
Okay.
On it, he had the same question as, um, was facing the stones with her subdivision. And I sent him an email today on it, so.
So tell him what needed to be done?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
So fiber can run along the side. Shall not be located less than thirty feet from the property line abutting a street unless it's a side street? Use that terminology?
Yeah.
Unless it is a side street, well.
Maybe we ought to say a street abutting a side yard. To use the same terminology as we say before.
Abutting?
Abutting.
Running alongside, is abutting a proper term?
That's what we looked up last time.
Or it's adjacent to it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We looked it up.
Yeah.
And decided abutting was.
Abutting a side yard. Okay. Alright, move to that and send it back to the city council, well, let's take a hold on, cause we're changing it here. Cause I wanna make a motion.
What are we changing?
Okay, we're changing the, then, um.
No, but, but once again, is this covering all zones or everything except R one nineteen?
Yes, for R one. It's in, now, this is in our all zones.
Right.
The R one nineteen has its own. Ten point. Fence criteria. Which is really designed for.
Yeah, I, I think. I think R one nineteen. ought to have in, in number eight. All other requirements contained in ten eleven dash eight B period shall be complied with. So we get into permit process. Beginning to the type of fence. Location and height, type of fence. Maintenance, permit requirements, construction, and non-conforming fences. I don't think we ought to limit to six, seven, and eight. Cause basically, we're saying R one nineteen, we're gonna check, we're just gonna say.
Yeah, that would pull in.
Oh yeah, we've got the permit still there.
Yeah, that, that's the idea.
But you have to have it in the permit. And. And six does.
Well, that, that's why six is included, yeah.
But I, I still think one, two, three, four, five ought to be covered as well. For them.
Well, that was one of the things with this open requirement though, that we wanted them to be able to. Not have an openness requirement down there.
Well, but remember, that was what the city council blocked out. And we, we sold them on the fact that the thirty foot setback. Would be the open space that they wanted for a wildlife foreland.
Yes, but the, another issue was the privacy down there because those smaller yards, people would want to have it closed and not have it open.
I know, and we, and we provided for that in, in this regulation as well.
But if we, if we include that, then we're opening that back up again where they have to have that openness requirement. From part of the fence, under number F.
Yeah.
So, but let's, let's see how that goes and.
Other news, send it back again.
We're not gonna sit, we're not gonna do that one, we're gonna leave that as it is, but this other one, we'll see, you know, the. The, the one that we're gonna incorporate into E, which is city wine, except for the R one nineteen with no overlay. So we're gonna try and fix. So if fences, fences and hedges taller than forty-two inches shall not be located less than thirty feet from a property lining. Abutting to a street on a side yard. No, that's not.
No, that's not it.
Unless. Shall not be located less than thirty feet from the property line. Abutting. A street.
Instead.
Except a street abutting a side yard.
Yes.
And can run alongs, the side or rear lot property lines as long as the fence does not extend beyond the front plane of the rest. So that's where that, we'll go back to them.
Okay, yeah. Do we want to take R?
Fencing?
This, this is.
Not tonight.
Yeah, right. So.
It's a type of fence, two A.
I know. This is where you and I disagree, remember?
Right, but. For R one nineteen, if I'm a lawyer, then they can do it. So maybe let's let that lie for a while and see what happens, how the fences look down there. And see if that.
So we're gonna let those, we're gonna approve that one?
Yeah.
And still, yes, feel bad, man, that's Jody.
Yeah, we got more problems in that one here right now.
Oh.
Is anybody listening? Yeah, yeah, we're trying to sort it out, but. We. Probably gonna put a final comment chain link in, which you can do. So. Remember, there's more restrictions down there. Well, there are, barbed wire.
There are.
There, there are, there's barbed wire, strand wire, and chain link fencing.
Galvanized.
Yeah, we didn't say galvanized.
We just said chain link fencing.
The gap, okay, does it make sense to allow galvanized in one place and ungalvanized in another? That's.
The only place we allow galvanized. Is around public facilities.
Right. We're ready. Among vinyl coated chain link. So. Let's just leave it as it is for now.
I mean, he can't flip chain links right now. Because it says no barbed wire, strand wire, or chain link fencing disapproved for use.
Chain link fencing. My, vinyl coated chain link fencing.
Chain link is chain link, come on. If you go back to the other one, vinyl coated chain link fencing is authorized. So this one just says chain link, no chain link, period.
But. In our, in two A, it makes a distinction between plain or vinyl.
But two A is not covered in R one nineteen.
That's true. But here, it says chain link, this is a vinyl chain link.
But it says no chain link, period.
Yeah, but it doesn't say no vinyl chain link.
Yeah, you two are.
You're right, sir. You're really. You know, and why did?
No wonder.
You, you, I know.
There is a family in this.
I know you did this too.
The way you're farthing.
I know you did this too, Sever. Part of my work was finding ways around things. And I know you did that too, with your work.
Oh, no.
No.
I know.
No.
I'm not an HR.
Yeah, right. So.
I mean, I had to go to a general that time and tell them, I'm sorry, sir, but your son cannot work. For, for the fence.
There must have been some rule. Must have been some rule.
Oh, yeah. Or it's you and me, or the two people that aren't children cannot work on this fence. So what did he do? He talked to, he talked to the commissary officer, which was not an emergency.
On the base, oh.
And. He didn't work for the commissary.
That's what I'm talking about.
That wasn't me. I told him, I said, so I'm sorry. Your children and my children, or the two, two children that cannot work on this fence. On, under any organization that you have command of. Well, I have command of the commissary. That's true.
Hey, guys, thanks. I'm going to.
Thanks, man.
Appreciate all your time.
Yeah, okay, sorry, this is right.
That's okay, it's been enjoyable.
It's enjoyable to see a spike.
Yeah, makes it exciting.
She has her opinion.
That's right.
Yeah. Let's try to say it later now. Let's try and get this on order to the first, see how we, how successful we might be.
I don't have a lot of holes.
So. Okay, last item, um, I was. Been tabled, but it has to do with the wording on, for the new proposed appeal authority. Ordinance. We're, um.
Well.
We're waiting for some feedback a little bit from our attorney still. And, uh. Want to look at that and make sure that it's, it's one of the regions have addressed. Uh, expressive concerns. We want to make sure that everything is, is good. So I'm going to table that. Um, we have it over here. So. We just wait till that gets, uh.
Be handled.
We have, as I said, we have a military.
Yeah.
So we'll wait to hear what really the attorney has to say and maybe we can refine that a little bit. And then from that, and we'll. Consider it in the future. We may, I know the mayor's anxious to, uh, get that on the books. We may call a special. Planning commission meeting.
Do I have a, does the city have it? City council membership?
They are.
Okay.
Are we taking motions to adjourn?
We're going to send motions to table that?
Yes, no, that's my frog.
Okay.
To table it.
Discussion. We had a motion to table the other.
I'll take a motion, someone else write a motion.
Table the discussion of number fourteen. Recommendation, city council, I'm in a city council title, sport eight, right here. And eleven, to clarify the initial motion, the building official who oversees compliance with the building. And the first approach to insert an enforcement officer who oversees compliance with the building.
Very good.
Just second.
Great, thank you.
Just for the.
Favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Just, just to note that. The main reason is we want more information from.
Yes, the attorney.
Makes sense.
Okay, Sever, you want to make your motion to the juror?
No.
Formally, you don't need one. Doing my affirmation.
I didn't, thank you, that's why I.
If you're not mad at me, are you, sir?
Oh, no.
Okay.
The witness is free with you.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, tonight was a bad night. And then we'll also discuss, uh. General plan next time as well.
Oh, yeah, we didn't do that one.
Yeah, you're right. But I already got, it's, yeah, let's do it next time.
All right. I mean, I've got my notes.
Okay, thank you. I got some notes, yeah, but together. But I don't have any for Lori or.
Well, there was one from Lori, yeah. In your.
Or was there?
Yeah.
Okay, that's one she gave, she gave Jody, and I, I didn't see it.
Yep, it's in there.
Oh, I see it, yep, I see it here now. Okay. So let's, um. Okay, any questions?
No.
Have you talked to your wife? And she tells you the same thing, huh?
Well, she's the one to say.
Well, that sounds a motivation area of work.
Or is her quality of painting less than your desire?
Oh, no, she's very meticulous. My wife used to like to paint, but no more, geez, I don't, I don't mind it. She, we have.
Did you guys close?
We did, we adjourned.
Yes, sorry.
Well, I, maybe I'll get some volunteers.